All right, welcome everybody, just get started here. Today is Tuesday, April 27, 2021. This is our Scranton City Council Caucus, welcome everybody. We have a few items to go over today, so we'll get started with the agenda. So quite a few things, the first one, we'll go through fifth order, 5B is a resolution accepting a recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board. They denied the certificate of appropriateness for Joyce Outdoor Advertising. So we are going to have a public hearing next Tuesday, May 4th at 5:45. Kevin, do you want to talk about that a little bit? And we went through this once before, but just the procedure.
I mean, we were, the procedurally Joyce Outdoor Advertising submitted an application for appropriateness to put in electronic billboard on a building that's, I think currently houses the drugstore on the corner of Linden and Adams. The Harb denied the application for appropriateness grounds that it detracts from historic character of the downtown district. Under the code, we have until, we have 45 days to take up the matter, to review it. Into that end, I put the applicant Joyce Outdoor Advertising on notice that we'll have a hearing like we did for the PNC Bank Building and the Plomo Groups. We'll have a hearing on May 4th, next week at 5:45.
Great, thank you. So next week, public hearing 5:45, May 4th.
Just to ask a question about this, when it comes to issues such as this, how many do you think we get on average per year?
So this is the Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first kind of, the first one we had was the last one, this will be the second one. So we don't really have anything to reference because we, the council and former, I think it was former Mayor Evans changed the, changed the law on this to make it so that if they did deny it, it would have to come before council and there's like another layer, right Lori? Am I right on that?
Yes, yes, there were amendments to the ordinance because former Mayor Wayne Evans named the entire downtown a historic district. So anyone that is looking to pull a permit or do work that affects the facade or something that is viewable from the street then would require a certificate of appropriateness of that work from the Historical Architecture Review Board. So the process has, is, we have a good process in place now, I think, when there is a denial from the Harb. The last one at the PNC Plaza, that was the first one. So this is the second, so we've established at least a procedure for this. So as Attorney Hayes said, he had contacted the applicant to notify them of the public hearing, which is also identified in the ordinance that we're obligated to do that, hold the hearing. So we can hear then from the applicant and then the council can determine if they agree with the denial or if, if you do not, based on that, you know, testimony provided at the hearing.
Thank you Lori, yeah, the procedure and the process seems, seems good, I don't mind that. I think it's the correct way to go, just looking to see what the, what the frequency or the volume is. We would think so, so in the past, we didn't get many, but with the new process, we're going to start seeing.
I think, I think they're up to it, just because of the volume now requiring the certificate of appropriateness. If the work is in the downtown. So you might see more, depending, the only, the only reason that you're going to see legislation on this is if the Harb denies a portion or all of the work. If the Harb is in agreement or if they work something out between the applicant and the board, then you wouldn't see legislation, only if the, if the Harb denies the application or part of the application, will you see legislation?
Correct, thank you, thank you Lori.
You're welcome.
And Tom, just, that was done too, to just give some teeth to the Harb to avoid, you know, outrageous signs like the possession of light sign, for example.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand the process and I understand why it's done, I was just looking to see how many we've, we've had or how many we're going to continue to get.
Very good.
And I know a lot of times, like even if the Harb disagreed, you know, they've worked together with, you know, where, you know, instead of denying it, they worked together, they, you know, put in revised plans and then the Harb approved it and it never got to our point.
Yeah, correct, thank you.
Anything else on 5B? I know there were some questions about 5C, the mayor sent legislation down to have the city of Scranton become a member of the Pennsylvania Gun Safety Alliance. So I know some of the questions that have come up were, you know, and the legislation is not really completely clear on what our membership, what the city's membership would exactly entail, what activities this group actually does, who's behind the group, so. You know, does anybody else want to speak to that?
I think, you know, I think back in, it was October, Kevin had sent us a, his response to something when it came to firearms and I know these are state laws, not laws of municipalities, and I know there's, there's going to be a, in addition to that amicus brief, but I feel council's starting to get into some situations where we're dealing with things that aren't controlled, run under the umbrella of municipalities, they're state laws. Maybe Kevin could say a little bit to that.
Well, this Pennsylvania has a very strong preemption clause and with regard to the Second Amendment, which basically provides that no municipality can restrain the use of firearms except for the city of Philadelphia is the only one that could. In other words, Pennsylvania preempts, Pennsylvania law controls. Now with regard to this specific, this legislation, I know some members of council have reached out to me regarding the Pennsylvania Gun Safety Alliance and I tried to do some research on, I really don't have any information. So my recommendation, you know, regardless of what your position is on the regulation of firearms is, is that we should get some information before the city associates itself with the Pennsylvania Gun Safety Alliance, we should find out who it is, who's on their board, what their mission is, what is it they do? You know, I think, I know someone had mentioned it would be important to get input from our, our police department and make sure it's whatever this group's mission is, is consistent with the policies and procedures of our law of, of our police department and maybe the district attorney's offices, those are the folks who are on the frontline with regard to gun related issues. So I, you know, that would be my recommendation is to ask the administration to give us some more information here. We have three paragraphs basically describing the organization and no backdrop, no back, backup documentation.
Yeah, I'd rather go in that vein. Now, when it comes, Kevin, when it comes to, you know, a gun related crime in the city, it is the district attorney's office that is prosecuting these cases, correct?
Correct, I mean, there is, there is, if thus it's a violation of a federal law, then the US Attorney's Office would intercede or if there's, if it cross, if it's a crime that crosses county boundaries, then the Attorney General's Office would participate in it. But, but when it's an isolated incident in, in the borough, in, within the borders of Lackawanna County, then it's the district attorney's office that prosecutes it, correct?
Yeah, I know we saw a couple of cases recently where, you know, guns were involved, their guns were found in a car, you know, somewhat scratched off serial numbers. These cases, do we know if the district attorney is prosecuting these to the fullest? I know there's mandatory minimums, things like that, but I mean, the deterrence here would be to prosecute these to the fullest.
I have no idea. You know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the status of that prosecution.
I'm just, I'm just looking into solutions, you know, when we're looking at something like this, this, this is something, it's a group that we, we sign up to, but any of the things that they stand for don't help us with any of those crimes that were actually committed in the city that we've seen over since January and we've had multiple. I think the best thing to do would be for the city and the administration to push the DA's office to prosecute these to the fullest.
Anybody else on?
I'd just like to add that I agree with finding out more information about the organization and what we would be supporting with this piece of legislation. You know, certainly in favor of ways to increase safety around surrounding gun usage and ownership, but I don't think that it's going to be, you know, to get a specific law in like the city of Scranton to restrict gun rights. I think this is just a way of being a part of an alliance to put pressure on the state legislature to enact more gun safety laws, which I know we need more information about, but I really don't think it's to, for us to do something on the city level, it's to urge the state to do something. Just in response to Councilman Schuster's comments.
Yeah, and I understand that and I see where we're going with it, I'm just looking at where, we're trying to get into areas that aren't, aren't under the umbrella of our municipality.
Okay, anybody else on 5C?
Yeah, I just want to chime in for a minute, so you know, my perspective. When you join a AAA for a membership, you know what you get, right? This, this nonprofit alliance membership, I don't know what it entails. I'm not comfortable with voting on anything, I don't have any information in front of me. So I guess we'll table it, I don't know, out on the floor and then, you know, require some more information.
Okay, anybody else on 5C? Alright, very good. Okay, 5D, 5E, 5F, those three pieces of legislation are all RACB grants. So that's just authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant on behalf of the university, on behalf of, in one instance, the developer who's developing 517 Boebard court and then for 5F, the school district to rehab the, the, many of our schools, I think 17 of them total, 17 buildings. So this is just kind of the process that they go through, we have to get a city approval on it. These, all three of these are, I went through the backup, they're all great projects and I support them 100%. I hope that they get the full amount for each one of those, but does anybody have any questions on 5D or F?
I guess just a comment, so looking at, looking at these, you know, they all seem like great projects. The school district one, I'd like to see them get the money that they need for those facilities and I know, well, the school district has had damage in some of those buildings from recent upgrades and I hope to see them pursuing that in a different route here, you know, to go back at some of these people that did some of these projects that may have possibly caused damage.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Okay, and 5G is the city, we would authorize a contract with Smart Recycling Company Incorporated to perform demolition work within the city. So if you look at the backup, there's several properties that are going to be demolished across the city. Among those are the Naog Pools and the Naog Pool Pump House and the Weston Field Pool House. So, you know, the Scranton demolition crew or the, this firm rather, the Smart Recycling Company, they were the lowest bidder for this project. So it's a great project, I talked to Eileen Cipriani for a little while earlier this morning and there's an, I think she said there's another 20 properties on top of this that are coming. So there's some, some movement here in terms of getting rid of the blight and using demolition to accomplish that. So anybody have any comments on 5G?
So I think just in my three years since I've been on council, you know, you, you recognize a lot of these addresses that are on here and they are definitely, you know, structures that do need to tear, get torn down. But we still need to, you know, develop a plan citywide to not get to this point where we're tearing down houses. Normally, when you tear down a house in the city of Scranton, you know, a structure will never go back on that property. You know, so you're generally really getting the land on it, so we really need a a full-scale approach to not get to this point.
Yeah, I had a chance to look at this, did we get all of disclosure information that we've been asking for with the last couple? I know the last couple items such as this, we've had to ask for, for some more information, did everything come included with this?
I believe so, yeah. I'd have to double check, but I believe so. Any other questions on 5G? Okay, sixth order is, we voted to introduce it last week, it's just the city's creating a special city account for the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation for the Weston Field Grant, so they're just trying to track that in a more efficient manner. I did have some questions on that that we posed last week, didn't get answers to that yet, but we do have another week until final passage, anybody have any questions on 6A?
Just about that information, if we got it, I know it was asked, but wasn't sure, I didn't see anything as of yet about it.
And then the seventh order are the, the grant applications, I did ask 7A, 7B and 7C. I did ask several questions about those last week and Eileen Cipriani did communicate the answers to me, so. She did send over the grant applications for the three projects, just a little bit more information on all three of them. And she did explain that the applications were submitted on April 14th per the program deadline. It's her understanding, because I did ask a question last week about how that works and she stated that applying for the grants does not, these type of grants does not require the legislative bodies approval for most programs, but just the acceptance of the grant funds and signing of grant agreement. The only exception to that would be the local share account grants. So that's where in the past, we've seen an emergency certificate come down so that they could meet the deadline. She also explained that DCNR is expected to announce the award early in 2022. And that leads me to my next, my next couple of questions were on the Naog Pool, which you see in 7B. So I made a comment in the newspaper, when the newspaper called me last week, I was kind of taken aback because I did not know, was not included in what was reported that the city was going with one of those options in terms of the $6.2 million grant. So we did speak to the mayor and Eileen this morning about that. And it turns out that the, that no final decisions have been made on the design or the scope of the Naog Pool project. So the $6.2 million that they're asking for in funding to DCNR, they had to put something in there in the grant application, that doesn't, according to them necessarily mean that that is the ultimate option that they're going with. They explained to me that that decision is going to be made with input from council and the Recreation Authority during the design phase and when they have a better idea of funding streams. They don't yet know how the American Rescue Package funds are going to be utilized, that information is still, is going to be forthcoming within the next month or two. So once they get an idea of how those funds can be utilized and, you know, they're going to discuss other funding streams. You know, we hope that we get the full grant amount, but we don't know that we will. And usually in most cases, these projects don't get everything that they're asking for. So they are aware of that and that's going to be a conversation that we will all be included on. So I was, I was pleased to, to see that. So does anybody have any questions on any of the seventh order items or the whole Naog Pool?
I mean, you're, the point you just made is good to hear because I was sort of taken aback a little bit too by the fact that thinking that one of those was, one of those plans was selected. Personally, you know, I wasn't happy with any of them, I thought we could maybe do a mixture of, you know, some of what they proposed. But I, you know, I think we should be a part of that conversation as well as the rec, you know, the rec board, because they're the ones up there, you know, day in and day out.
Yeah, and they told me that, the mayor and Eileen told me this morning that they will have to issue an RFP for the engineering and the, the architecture firm will use our collective input to design the pool complex. So that's a drawn out process, it takes about nine months for, for the whole thing to kind of come to fruition. So I was assured this morning that we all will be a part of that process along with the Recreation Authority. Any other questions on that?
No, other than I'm glad to hear that as well, because, yeah, when, when, I guess when the news was broken to me, it was also the Scranton Times that had told me that, I was under the impression that the, the project was selected, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, just, I think, a little bit of miscommunication, I think, but it was quick.
And I think I also like to reiterate what Kyle had said there. When looking at those plans, I wasn't 100% fully satisfied with each one as well and I thought maybe, I think some of the lines of my questioning when the company was, was there that night was kind of looking at some of the objects that we might be using, some of the design work, things like that, so. I think that's a good suggestion that he brought up of maybe getting some kind of hybrid in there of what everyone would be satisfied with.
One question about the pool and I'm not sure if you recall, but I believe we had a line item in the budget for the, for the repairs that would go towards that, correct? I was wondering how much we had.
There was one.
Because then that could be included in that, that budget that we're talking about now.
There was money in 2000, in the 2020 budget, but it wasn't utilized. And I don't think we had any money in there in 2021, there may be some money in the, I know there's money that was put away in the, the grant match line item, so they may use some of those funds. But some of those funds are already earmarked for other projects as well, so I'm not too sure, but we can inquire about that.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it was 2020 where it was in there, because at the end of 2019 was when we first got word about the issues they were having with the liner. So we, we had, we had put that in there for 2020. But then that was never used throughout 2020. And I don't know, I'll have to go back and look, but I don't think there was anything in there for 2021.
I didn't get a chance to take a look yet, or 2021 budget, but I'm just curious if anyone recalled.
Yeah, Councilwoman Rothschild, that's a, that's a good point to bring up, because if that money is still around, I mean, maybe that could be money that goes towards some of the design work.
I do recall former Mayor Wayne Evans targeting some money for that. I don't remember the exact amount, I want to say close to 200 grand, I might be wrong, but I do remember hearing there was money targeted for that.
Yeah, I think it wasn't for the cost of the liner.
Yep, that was for 2020. Okay, any other questions on the seventh order pieces? Okay, very good. Kevin, do you have anything?
I'm on mute. I sent out that, or I drafted that correspondence that Dr. Rothschild had requested and that you all approved through a motion that requested, that requested the mayor provide us with at least a month, on a monthly basis, a list of employees and vacancies. And I believe that went out last week. The LST hearing before Judge Monley is scheduled for April 28th, so that's earlier in the year than last year, right Kyle? So that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, still not early enough, but.
But the petition was filed early, so this is the last year we'll have to do that. Yeah, yeah, and that, this instance, I think we're at the, we were at the mercy of the court. And then we, who knows, just when I'm working with Lori on the transition, now that she's decided to abandon us. So that's, that's about it.
Lori, do you have anything?
Thank you, no, I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. I just have a few things before we open it up to everybody else. So we did receive a response, I haven't reviewed the whole thing yet, we got it, I think later this afternoon from Carl Dealey in response to the questions that we had about the emergency declaration. So if everybody wants to take a look at that and we'll put that in third order for next week. So he did respond, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, Eileen Cipriani, the director of OVCB, did respond to the questions of about the items in seventh order and cleared up the confusion on the Naog Pool assessment. We did receive the final Naog Pool assessment, so everyone should have received a copy of that, it was, I think, like 77 or 78 pages. And that is all I had, other than, we did, last week for the, the public comment, we did send Marie Schumacher and Tom Coin's questions to the administration. As far as I know, Lori, we didn't get any responses yet to those?
No, not yet.
Okay, so when we do, we'll make that part of the record. Okay, Kyle, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, first off, just in regards to the IT, I know I got through Carl's a little bit, there were tears but I didn't get all the way through it, but, I mean, we need to do something about the IT department. My Granicus has worked since the beginning of the year and you keep on, you know, making requests and nothing comes back. And we don't even have the ability to call Granicus ourselves, because we're not the administrator on the account. So it's not like, and it's something with our account, with my account and not with the hardware. I did, I was able to figure that out. You know, we got reports that there was no IT support yesterday, I know we got a letter. So we need to find out specifically, who is the IT support person for council? And where do we go with our questions? I know we've all had issues with our emails that have taken too long to address and get cleared up and we've had issues with Granicus and I just think we, we need to find out who our IT support person is. Because if I can't start getting my Granicus, I'm just going to start making motions to table everything and then vote against everything, if I don't have an agenda.
Okay. Anyone else, or Kyle, do you have anything else?
No, that's it, oh, I do, I do, sorry, just to bring it up and just for thought. Normally we reschedule our meeting the week of Election Day and that's only three weeks away now. So if we should just start thinking about when everybody is available that week. Because normally city halls close too, so.
Good point, okay. Councilman McAndrew, anything from you?
I, well, I share the same concerns with regards to the IT issues that we have, that now employees are having. I'll speak to it more after public comment, because we all received that letter today.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rothschild, any, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank, and Councilman Schuster?
Yeah, I, I guess I go the same, the same sentiment about the IT department, we did receive that letter and it'll be in citizens' participation tonight. I guess, two things, have we heard anything back about the metal book project? I know for maybe two weeks in a row, we've asked the administration to maybe take a look to see what that would, how that would go with maybe getting some kind of fix in there for those couple neighbors there that have their backyards dug up. So as of yet, I haven't heard anything, has anyone else heard anything?
No, Lori, I don't think we received a response to that yet, did we?
No, we have not.
And then the other thing was, you know, after we got the, the audit back from Kohansky, there was a piece that came up on it was the status of the Scranton Parking Authority was, there was an adverse opinion on that. And when looking at that, you know, it's a legally, legally separate part of this parking authority is a separate part of the city that would need its own audit. I know Kevin, you, you had reached out to the solicitor from the parking authority? And you, I think you were saying we were trying to, you know, get them to maybe look into an audit of themselves, is that the route we were taking?
Well, I have to, to Todd John's credit, I've, we've been playing phone tag for the last two days. I, I think the issue is going to be, and I don't, I don't, I don't know this for certain, is that the parking authority is, has basically contracted out to a private company that, that runs the operations and I don't know that we can compel that company to do an audit, but I'll see what he says, I think that's going to be the issue.
I guess that helps me to understand it a little bit better there. I guess I had a, maybe a different thought in, in how that, what that relationship was there. So I was just looking into what council's role in that would be, so you think that's the extent of our role at this point in time?
I don't know for certain, well, council, I don't think has any role, it's, it's basically, it's up to the, the parking authority. But again, like I said, that, as you know, the presentations that are made, and Phil, what's the name of the company, the, it's a, that runs the parking operations? The it's a that runs the parking operations.
Yeah, A B M is the company that runs it, but N D C is the nonprofit that contracted out there.
Right, so there's no. There's no financials for Scranton Parking Authority itself to report or to have audited. It's it's these other companies. But I I I'll I'll get back to you. I mean, Todd, to his credit, we've tried to try to touch base with me. And I will find out, you know, what what their position is.
Yeah, and then.
And I think and I I I think at this point that the parking authority's only function is just to provide oversight. Of N D C and A B M that they live up to the agree the lease agreement.
That's right.
You know, so because because technically, we didn't sell the parking authority, you know, we only leased. It was only leased out, and then it comes back. To the parking authority after, what was it, thirty years, I think?
Right.
Okay, so that that's always gonna, you know, every audit is gonna turn up adverse.
Right.
Okay, all right, I got you. I understand that.
Anybody else have anything?
Bill?
Yes.
Just very briefly, I'd be remiss if I didn't note that tonight is um is is Lori's last meeting as our clerk. And a role she has served in for the last eight years, and I I I haven't had the opportunity to say publicly what I told her privately, and that is. Lori has done, and by my estimation and by in my opinion, an outstanding job as a as the city's clerk, not only for this council. But for the the several that she served before us. And, um, you know, anybody who thinks that. A public of public employees or or city employees are not competent or or efficient should spend a day with Lori Reed. Because she does an outstanding job in being the custodian of the city's records. And I've been a solicitor for a state agency and for other municipalities, and Lori runs and organizes as efficient. And. Well organized meetings I've ever been part of, so I want to thank her for all of her guidance and helping me come up to speed as a solicitor. And thank her for her really her dedicated service to our city, and we certainly are going to miss her.
Thank you. I agree with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that. My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Bill, I just have a question. I'm I'm not sure if Kathy was going to make the meeting this evening. Um, if she is going to be absent, I'll be calling roll.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thanks, Lori.
Knock it off easy in your last meeting.
Yeah, we're good. Squeeze everything.
Out of you.
Uh, anyone have anything else? Okay, we'll reconvene here at six thirty for the regular meeting. Thanks, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order of Scranton City Council Tuesday, April twenty seven, two thousand twenty one. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world. For those who have passed away recently in our city, and for all of those people in our community, in our country, and around the world who are suffering because of the pandemic. Let us continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected. And who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Thank you. Miss Mrs. Reed, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Mr. McCandrew.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gohin.
Here, thank you. An executive session was held on Thursday, April twenty second, two thousand twenty one at five P M in council chambers. In order to interview four applicants for the position of city clerk. This executive session was conducted in compliance with Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, because the exclusive purpose of the executive session was to address. A personnel matter. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, emergency declaration issued by Mayor Page G. Cognetti. Dated April sixteen, two thousand twenty one, regarding information technology department. Three B, correspondence from City Controller dated April sixteen, two thousand twenty one. To Mayor Cug, excuse me, to Mayor Cognetti regarding emergency declaration for information technology services. Three C, correspondence received from Business Administrator dated April twenty, two thousand twenty one. Regarding emergency declaration for information technology services. Three D, minutes of the Shade Tree Commission Meeting held November ten, two thousand twenty. Three E. Excuse me, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held March seventeen, two thousand twenty one. Three F, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held April twenty one, two thousand twenty one.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So tomorrow, once again, our friends at Friends of the Poor will be having an emergency drive-through food giveaway. Uh, two thirty to five thirty at Scranton High. That's all I have.
Uh, I have one too. Uh, effective today, April twenty seventh, uh, changes were made or changes take effect for the Pennsylvania move over law. That it requires approaching drivers who are unable to merge into a further lane to reduce reduce their speed. By twenty five, twenty miles per hour less than the posted speed limit. Is it? It imposes two points for failure to merge into the lane not next to the emergency response area. Sets five sets fines at five hundred for first time offenders at that for first time offenders, excuse me, a thousand for second time for second offense. And two thousand for a third subsequent subsequent funds. Just a reminder to when you're on the highway, if there's a emergency vehicle or any vehicle on the side of the road to move over into the other way.
I have a a couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow, there will be a Pine Brook Community Pop-Up Event that the revitalization. Uh, program is is hosting over at National Bakery on Kipaus Avenue. That's going to be at eleven A M. And it's a press conference, but it's also an opportunity to learn about their revitalization plan, sign up for committees. Find out some more about it, and then. I know Mark had mentioned the Friends of the the Poor that was on my list, too. But also, I don't believe we've mentioned here that coming up is going to be Observe Scranton Week. Um, which I believe is the first time that they are doing this, which will be a celebration of Jane Jacobs, who. Was a famous author who had written The Death and Life of Great American Cities, and she was born in Scranton. And there's going to be several events going on throughout that that week, May fourth through the eighth. And more can be found out about the events on their Observe Scranton Facebook page or at observe scranton.org. Um, I know that the Fringe Festival is hosting a Story Slam that week, and then the University of Scranton is also. Hosting a community event.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just have one. As I mentioned earlier, a public hearing is going to be held next Tuesday, May fourth at five forty five P M for item. Five B on tonight's agenda, the Historical Architecture Review Board's denial of the certificate of appropriateness by Joyce Outdoor Advertising. For sign at jet five thirty nine Linden Street. Mrs. Reed.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals, Patricia Nestor, Bev DeBaros. Jeannie Davidson, John White, and Marie Schumacher.
Make a motion to accept public comment.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept public comment. Mrs. Reed, would you please leave comments into the record?
Thank you. The first submission is from Patricia Nestor as follows. I keep hearing about drug use on the increase caused by the isolation from COVID. I was wondering if some money from CARES Act could be used to purchase, distribute, and train people to use Narcan. The one dose I purchased with insurance cost me fifty dollars. Not everyone has insurance or extra money to keep Narcan on hand. It should be in everyone's first aid kit. If the mayor does her pop-up tents around the city again this summer, she should distribute Narcan along with the recycling bins. It should also be made available at these vaccine clinics. The second submission is from Bev DeBaros as follows. Dear friends, about the position of Parks and Recreation Director, Brooke Newhart. Sounds ideal for the recreation part, but is maintaining the parks also her responsibility? Could you elaborate on that part of the job description? The third submission is from Jeannie Davidson as follows. Counsel, on Monday, April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty one, City Hall employees experienced I T issues. That were preventing us from using our emails, scanners, and faxes. In and of itself, this does not seem like a big deal, but to a worker that relies on these functions to perform their jobs. It is a big deal. My question is, how can the city operate an I T department with one part-time employee? We are paying an astronomical amount of money for this Bedrock Company to assist in the I T department. Why don't they have someone set up in-house? Today, with the issue, the help desk was called. The response was from the part-time employee. Stating that he was in class and would try to resolve the issue when he was done. Needless to say, and not by any fault of this young man, but it was hours before the issue was fixed. I would like to know what the true function of this company is and why there isn't at least one of them stationed in-house. To help with everyday issues. I don't understand how it is okay to operate this way. We have endured many changes, many protocols and rules not being followed. We are trying to abide and do our jobs to the best of our ability, but more so than not, there always appears to be a technical issue somewhere. If this company is hired to handle only the big stuff for that amount of money, then I think we have all had the wool pulled over our eyes. The fourth submission is from Mr. Jack White as follows. I live in the hill near Naog, the best. Some issues, however, the neighborhoods here are beautiful. And for the most part, we citizens take care of our properties, but we need the city to lend a hand. While the gas company is currently making cuts in our streets and avenues, they leave a lot of debris behind, dust, dirt, tar, gravel, etc. Don't you think it would be a good idea to shortly after the cutting and before the dust settles on our windows, porches, cars, and lungs? Clean as you go. Let's work together, Scranton Council, to help us to keep our neighborhoods clean, healthy, and safe. Thanks. P S, send the neighborhood folks an email or text message over a few days before the cleaning crew is coming. Maybe odd even for parking. Thank you for your time and attention. And the fifth and last submission is from Marie Schumacher as follows. Would you please provide a list of the can and cannot uses for the sixty nine point nine million dollars? We are borrowing from future generations and the status of when it will be available for spending. I am opposed to the five C resolution. Primarily because the backup is not very helpful in providing just what impact this will have on Scranton residents and visitors to Scranton. Before this is voted upon, I would like to know how this may impact Pennsylvania's existing statute. Please advise us of the position this group takes, if any, on the P A Stand Your Ground statute. Also, should other municipalities take positions not one hundred percent in sync, it could cause confusion and avoidance of Scranton. Will the two thousand twenty audit be received on time this year? And that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. On the question?
On the question, I had a couple of things. First, to Ms. Nestor. I regarding her comments on Narcan, I I do feel that we should have it more readily available. I've previously attended events where it's been given away, so I'm surprised that she had to purchase one for fifty dollars. And I know that a little while ago, the Pennsylvania Department of Health was really pushing for the distribution. Of Narcan so that it was really available to the public. So I would be interested in in finding out more on. How we could help with the the distribution of that as a city. And. The second thing, I know some other council members were interested in making comments on. The participation we received from Ms. Davidson, but I I believe that the purpose the purpose of the emergency declaration. From last week was so that we would have a functioning help desk with I T, so I was disappointed to hear that. You know, that she had difficulty getting. Getting response and help from them, and I know that we've had, you know, our problems with council with. Being able to access email as Councilman Don who mentioned earlier. So I I would like some more answers from them. I did have a chance to just. Briefly review what Mr. Dealey had sent over to us earlier in the day. Which detailed some of the reasons for the emergency declaration and. Included like specifications on the positions in that department and what tier. Uh, some of the employees are and and what we're what we're missing there. But it didn't. I don't believe that it explained. You know, how Bedrock is is currently operating and why we might not have. Help desk there full time, so. Yeah, I would be interested in in getting. More answers from them on that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, on that point, I mean, we've we we added jobs into that I D T department. I understand that there's two jobs that are. Yet to be filled, but there still should be three people. That are budgeted for and that are apparently on the payroll, but we can't seem to get I T support anywhere. Um, I know we've had issue. We've all had issues with our emails. We've had issues with our our Granicus accounts. Um, I've had an issue with my Granicus account since last year that still hasn't been resolved, so. I read my agendas just like everybody else does, where normally we get them in our system a couple days before they're posted to review. To give us more time to review before we vote on them the next week, but so. I think we, you know, we need to send correspondence to the administration to see who exactly is our I T. Support person that council can reach out to directly on those two issues. I mean, in terms of, you know, what we do. Not the what the office workers do, but what we do. You know, really, it's just Granicus and email that we have to deal with, and I think those should be simple fixes, but apparently they're not.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, on the question, so I'd like to address Mrs. Davidson's I T issues. You know, we're not a modern Stone Age family from the town of Bedrock, but we're at Bedrock's Bedrock's mercy right now. Uh, we're paying twelve thousand seven hundred and some dollars a month. They've been here a while. I feel bad for these employees. They can't do their basic function of work every day, so I agree. Let's send some correspondence. Let's see where we're at. I I received a thing from Mr. Dealey today. I haven't really had time to go through all that, but. We can't have these problems day to day. You should be rectified, and I know we're looking for an I T director since January. How many people applied? Were any people interviewed? And the two other positions, where are we at with that? So I look forward to an answer to some of these questions.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, so as well, I'd like to echo the other council. And then I'm in with the issues with the I T department. I know three or four weeks ago I had an issue with my Granicus. And I was scrambling at the last minute to try to get an agenda, so I I know the frustration there, and that was only one day out of the week, so I can't even imagine how that would be. Having to go to work with those issues. So I I hope that gets cleared up and we get to the bottom of that. The in regard to Mrs. Schumacher's comments, I'm looking into that, the alliance. I I'm not really sure where they stand. On a few different issues, but I think Stand Your Ground was the the one thing that they were opposed to. So I think her her concerns are legitimate there. And for that, I'll be making a motion to table that tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Mrs. Reed?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
I will now entertain nominations for the position of City Clerk.
Sorry. I make a motion to nominate Frank Voldenberg for appointment to the position of City Clerk effective May three, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'll be voting no for Mr. Voldenberg. It's nothing personal, but it wasn't my choice. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? On the question, I'm going to be voting for Mr. Voldenberg. I want to thank everyone who applied and showed interest in this position. I personally was very impressed with Mr. Voldenberg's resume and background. I think he brings a unique skill set that I believe will serve this council and the public very well. Mr. Voldenberg has already performed a lot of the duties and exhibited many of the skills throughout his career that I believe are necessary to be a successful city clerk and maintain the integrity and efficiency of our office. So I'm pleased to vote for him, and I look forward to working with him. Anyone else on the question? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, the motion is adopted. Frank Voldenberg is hereby appointed City Clerk pursuant to Section four oh six of the Home Rule Charter effective May third, two thousand and twenty-one. So he will officially start this coming Monday. And as Kevin mentioned in the caucus, we are working on an arrangement to keep Mrs. Reed on for at least two additional weeks to help with the transition. So there'll be more details to come on that as we firm things up there. And since this is Lori's last meeting, I'd like to give her an opportunity now to say a few words. Lori?
Thank you, Councilman Gahan. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Voldenberg on his appointment at City Clerk. I wish him all the best, and I offer him any assistance that I can provide for a smooth transition. I also wanted to again state that it has been an honor to serve the city and especially you, the honorable council members, and for placing your faith and trust in me and for your friendship and support. Former Councilman Bob McGough was the first council president that I served under, and I have the utmost respect and deepest sense of appreciation and gratitude for him. I also have to mention former City Clerk Jay Saunders, who actually hired me eighteen years ago. And I think of both of them often. And I'd like to thank Mary Ann Kittless, who I worked with in council's office at that time. Another former City Clerk who provided his time and guidance to me, which was just invaluable when I became City Clerk, was Mr. Frank Naughton. And I'd like to thank your solicitor, Kevin Hayes, for all of his support. It has been a pleasure working with you. And finally, I have to thank Sally Locker from the city's law department for her friendship and support over the years. And also to Kathy Carrera from council's office for always going above and beyond for the betterment of the council and for all of her assistance as we navigated this past year, despite all of its challenges. Thank you again, council, for allowing me this time, and it has been truly my pleasure to have served as City Clerk. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Lori. And I know I said a few words about you last week, but I just want to say again that, you know, your dedication and your hard work is, sometimes under extremely difficult conditions, was unbelievable. You really did a very good job for the city of Scranton, keeping these meetings running really without a hitch. And I'm actually disappointed that we're not able to do this in person. And this past year has been very, very difficult with the pandemic, trying to put these meetings together. And Lori, you know, has just been an unbelievable asset to us to make sure that these meetings were able to go on relatively quickly as soon as the pandemic, as soon as things shut down. We really got things up and running rather quickly. Lori, your reputation and your commitment to the city of Scranton as the City Clerk, in my opinion, is unmatched. Now, I'm biased because I've had the opportunity to work with you even before you were City Clerk, but I really feel that you've done an amazing job. And I personally have learned an awful lot from the way that you were able to handle all kinds of different personalities in City Hall and in the public and on council, and that did all the different situations with grace and professionalism. And, you know, people can really learn from that. I've learned from that because it's easy to get bogged down and caught up in the minutia, but Lori was always able to look past that, see the good in people. And the bottom line was to get things done, to make sure the council meetings ran professionally, and she just did a really good job. So Lori, enjoy your retirement. I don't live that far from Lori, so I'm sure I'll see her, and we'll all be calling her, you know, for advice and whatnot. So enjoy your retirement. You deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Lori. You know, I think Councilman Gahan mentioned, having, you know, worked with her for a period of time, but it doesn't take long to work with you to know the type of work ethic that you have and what you bring to council and to City Hall. And not only that, but even in like our neighborhood Facebook group recently, someone had asked a question about how to contact council, and I had mentioned, you know, contacting you and that that would just be for another week or two before you retire. But even the kind things that people had said on there about you, I mean, the people in the city know just how hard you work and how helpful you can be or have been in that position. And we'll really miss you going forward. I wish you the best of luck in your retirement. I truly hope you enjoy it, and I also look forward to working with Mr. Voldenberg.
Also, thank you, Lori. Thank you for your service to the city, and I wish you the best of luck.
All right, thanks for everything, and I mean everything. I don't know how we're going to do it without you.
Mr. Voldenberg has big shoes to fill.
Thank you, everybody, for your kind work. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Reed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman's comment.
I say that in my sleep, Mrs. Reed, Mrs. Reed. Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Feel like I'm at a wake. Councilman McCandrew, any motions or comments?
I just have a comment. So as Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety, I'd just like to say that I was thrilled to see that the police last week went through bias training. And I was even more thrilled, and I think the public needs to know that this wasn't a reactive training. They're proactive. This training's been going on for several years, and I'm very glad to see it and proud of them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
I know nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
I just have one thing, or two things, really. I think we all received an email from a gentleman that was just trying to find some information regarding liens that the Law Department couldn't provide any backup for. His father had passed away, and he's just trying to settle the estate. So I did forward, I just saw that today, so I did forward that along to Mary Jo Sheridan just to see if the Treasury's office has anything there. And also, since we've had, just then on DPW issue, since the fleet manager has been in position for a while. Ms. Reed, before you go, one more request for you. Would you be able to just request a list of all DPW vehicles and equipment? How old each is? And then where each of that, where each piece of equipment is currently being stored? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Just a couple of issues. The first one, we received an email. I received a personal email, and I'm going to call this gentleman tomorrow. Just received it late this evening. But we received something from State Representative Marty Flynn's office regarding a gentleman that lives at ten thirty-one South Webster Avenue, and he's having a continuing deteriorating issue with a stream that curls around his property at the corner of South Webster and Elm. Apparently, this has been going on now for a number of years. The property's been reviewed by city officials in the past, and apparently, they were under the impression that this area was being included in a previous recent grant application, but the project was not included in the final application. So this gentleman is looking for help. He emailed me. Like I said, I'm going to give him a call tomorrow. But Mrs. Reed, if we can send something to the administration, making them aware of this again, to see if we can get this gentleman some help. And I will make a few phone calls tomorrow to see what I can do and be up to speed on what's going on there. I mentioned this in the caucus, so I'll just mention it again for the record. There was an article in the newspaper about the Naog Park Pool, and there was some confusion, I think, between council and the administration. I was under the impression, after reading the grant application, that the city, in fact, chose a specific option for the pool, the option that costs six point two million dollars. And I was surprised by that, as was stated in the newspaper, because I did not know that that was the option that the city was going to choose. I did have a conversation this morning with the mayor and Eileen Cipriani, the Director of OVCD, and they stated that no final decision has actually been made on the designer scope of the project at Naog Park, the pool complex. So that will occur during the design phase of the project, and council and the Recreation Authority will be involved in that decision-making process. So obviously, over the last month and a half, two months, we had provided our input. The firm that did the analysis came in twice, along with members of the administration. And that is going to continue now at the latter part of this process. One of the things that was pointed out in my conversation today and in a follow-up email with Ms. Cipriani was that the RFP for the, to select the engineering or architectural firm that actually does the design and permitting work, that's, the process is anticipated to take about nine months. So this isn't anything that's going to happen overnight, unfortunately, just by the nature of the process. The other thing that I know I've gotten questions on from members of the public is can we, can the city use, and I think Ms. Schumacher asked a question about, how are we going to use the, or is the city going to use the ARP funding, the American Rescue Package funding? As everyone knows, been well documented, we received sixty-nine point nine million dollars. We have not officially received that money. It's designated to the city. And according to the mayor and Eileen Cipriani this morning, they're awaiting regulations on how that money can be spent, the regulation as to the manner that the funding can be spent. So as soon as we have that, I think then the process and the conversations will kick in about how exactly we're going to fund this project. As we know, on the agenda tonight, we have a grant requesting six point two million dollars in funding with a little over three million dollars as a match to DCNR. That determination on whether or not we're awarded that grant will take place in two thousand, sometime in two thousand and twenty-two. It's not guaranteed that we're going to get that full amount. So those conversations will take place over the next few months. And as everyone knows, I've made this clear in my comments, I do think that we should go for the, it is the more expensive option, but I think it's important that we do this the right way. We don't cut any corners, and I know that the mayor and Eileen feel that way as well. I'm in talking to them this morning, that we want to make sure that we, you know, have an impact up there. And if we're going to replace it, we do it the right way and make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. And I think, oh, we did receive a response from Mr. Dealey on the IT piece. Again, we received this kind of late this afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to go through the whole thing. But I did just take a look as the council meeting was going on, going on to answer Mr. McCandrew's question. And this was identified in the letter. The, as we know, the Director of IT has been a vacant position since January of two thousand twenty-one, according to Mr. Dealey. They've received five resumes that met the minimum requirements for that position. Two candidates progressed to second interviews. One candidate was offered the position but declined due to a counteroffer from another employer. One candidate does have a second interview that was, I think, scheduled this week. So according to him, they may be getting close to hiring someone. And there's other things in here that I haven't, it's a couple pages long. I haven't had a chance to go through it. All right, that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. Five B for introduction, a resolution accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and denying the certificate of appropriateness for Joyce Outdoor Advertising, three seventeen Poplar Street, two B, Scranton, PA one eight five zero nine, for the modification of signage at five thirty-nine Linden Street, Scranton, PA one eight five zero three.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the city of Scranton to become a member of the Pennsylvania Gun Safety Alliance.
At this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to table item five C.
There's been a, there's been a motion on the floor to table Agenda Item five C, and Councilman McCandrew seconded that motion. On the question?
On the question, I just feel we're starting, council's starting to get into things that are out of the jurisdiction of a municipality.
On the question, I'm a huge advocate of increasing gun safety laws. But at the same time, you know, we don't, given the backup we were given, there's nothing in terms of what this alliance is advocating for specifically and who is involved. So I think once we get, you know, some more information on that from the administration, I'd be willing to entertain this, but I'll vote to table for the, until we receive more information.
Yeah, I agree. I'm going to vote to table it just because I do think it's important to know, you know, who's actually involved in this group. What does our membership actually entail? Is it just to support the group's goals, which we don't know? It's not clear in the, in the, there's nothing in the backup legislation that really states all the information that we would need to give our okay on this. And then there is a sentence in here that says that the city wishes to support the group's activity by becoming a charter member of the Gun Safety Alliance. So I think we need more on what actually that activity is and things of that nature. Like Councilman Donahue said, I support gun safety a hundred percent. I don't have a problem with that at all, universal background checks. But I do think we need to know a little bit more about the group before we give our stamp of approval. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, I'll also vote to table the motion. As I mentioned earlier in caucus, I am also in favor of gun safety laws, but I would never want us to sign on to something when we don't know what we're supporting, you know, either what legislation this organization is pushing or what our support would mean or entail. I mean, we really need to find out that before we can make an appropriate vote on it. So that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, I'll be voting to table also. I don't really, but I do believe in gun safety, but I also respect the, you know, the rights of the legal gun owners. So like I said in caucus, I mean, this is to join a membership with very little information. I said earlier, like, you know, a triple-A membership, you know what you get. But with this membership, I have no idea what it entails. I have no idea what the reaction or, you know, have we looked for input from, you know, our local fraternal or peace? Or like what Slister Hayes said, you know, the DA? Is this accepted by other cities? Which ones? Uh, i- i- is this accepted by other cities? Which ones is this, you know, accepted? Are there members from, you know, uh, the DA Association across the state or the FOP, uh, memberships across the state? So, well, without that information, of course, I, I, I'll never vote on, on something I don't totally understand. So, um, that's where I'm at with this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Okay, there's been a motion and a second and on the question to table agenda item 5C. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and 5C has been tabled.
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $1,500,000, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful and coordinate the use of the grant funds with the University of Scranton at 301 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton, for the project to be named Engineering Program Facilities Project.
And at this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Um, on the question, this is a outstanding project. Um, this is a, gonna be a huge investment that the University of Scranton is making. I, I fully support this project, uh, for one major reason, uh, it's going to help not only the university retain students, but I think and I hope that it helps the city of Scranton retain, uh, that talent. Um, according to the grant application, the closest university or college that has this type of program is Wilks. Uh, there's only seven other Jesuit universities out of 27 across the country that have this type of major. Um, and it's going to help, uh, retain that talent to work in industries like automotive, HVAC, uh, aerospace, biotechnology, computers, electronics, manufacturing. So it's gonna improve, hopefully improve our regional workforce. So, um, this is a great project and I thank the University of Scranton for continuing to make an investment, not only on their, in their campus and in their, their student body and in their program, but in, uh, the city of Scranton as well. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $1 million, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful and coordinate the use of the grant funds with Slocum Hollow Properties LLC for the project to be named the 517 Bogart Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Uh, on the question, another exciting project that I hope gets, uh, funding, uh, from the state. It's gonna have a huge impact, uh, on our downtown. These buildings, these three buildings are currently vacant. Um, and there's, they have a, a very historical nature going back, uh, decades in the city of Scranton. So, um, again, this is good for our downtown, good for the city of Scranton. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for an executed grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of $3 million, accepting and dispersing the grant if the application is successful and coordinate the use of the grant funds with City of Scranton School District for the project to be named the Emergency Building Capital Improvement Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, uh, again, uh, another great project and I'm a product of the Scranton School District, uh, from preschool all the way up until 12th grade. And I had a great experience in, uh, the Scranton School District. So did all of, uh, my friends growing up. And I am always concerned, uh, that the, the school district is getting knocked around terribly all over the place lately. We need the school district to be strong in order for the city to be strong. I know that's been stated here since I've been on council and it just goes without saying, but as the school district goes, so goes the city, really so goes the county. Um, so this is the least that the state of Pennsylvania can do is to fund this project and give us help with our, our schools and going, looking through this, uh, the, the backup information in the grant. And obviously we have former school directors, uh, in the meeting today. Everyone is, is fully aware that there's so many issues in our schools, um, with, uh, maintenance needs. Uh, I used to work at South Intermediate when I was, uh, substitute teacher, the boiler, uh, down there. All these things that, um, are gonna benefit our students and ultimately benefit the city of Scranton. So I fully support this project and I truly hope that our state legislators and, and, and the governor is going to, uh, uh, approve this and make sure they get the full amount. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Smart Recycling Company Incorporated to perform demolition work within the city.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Um, on the question, I was thrilled to see this legislation, uh, in this contract with this company to demolish these properties. Several of these properties have actually gotten phone calls on and emails over the last, uh, few years. And, and finally, the, the, the city is taking action to demolish these properties. As everybody knows, there's always one, uh, home or one property in each neighborhood throughout the city sometimes, more than that, uh, that needs to come down, um, is blighted and people just, it just takes down people's property values and, and it's a hindrance on, uh, on, on the neighborhood. Um, so I'm thrilled to see this. And I was also thrilled this morning in talking with Director Cipriani that there's more of this to come. I do think, and I know that the city's gonna work with the land bank to make sure that when these properties are taken down, uh, when they can be adjoined with other properties, that the neighbors sometimes will wanna take care of them to expand their yard and potentially, uh, put some of these properties together, um, with other properties so that they are buildable, uh, through the land bank. So, um, I'm hopeful. Uh, and this is gonna be, that this is gonna be done rather quickly because of the nice weather and, uh, we start to see our neighborhoods improve. Anyone else on the question?
Uh, yeah, on the question, I agree, uh, you know, looking through this list of these properties, a lot of them, you know, have been problem properties over the past three years. Um, so I, I'm glad they are being taken down because they are eyesores in their neighborhood. Um, but I will, you know, restate my, what I said in, uh, caucus that, uh, you know, we still need to have, uh, overall plan, uh, to avoid getting to this point with properties. Cause most of the time, like you said with the, you know, going into the land bank, but most of the time we tear down properties in the city, nothing will ever be put up there. So the land bank is the only option. So we need a better overall plan and strategy to avoid, uh, you know, getting to this point, uh, as much as we are right now.
Anyone else?
I'm excited too, because you know, the majority of, not, not the majority of complaints, but we get a constant flow of complaints concerning uh, buildings that need to come down. So I'm, I'm glad to see that it's finally gonna happen. And I'm sure the, the public's gonna be thrilled to hear this too.
Very good. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 67, 2021, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number is noted, entitled Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation Weston Field Grant for the receipt and disbursement of capital grant funds from the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation Incorporated.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 156, 2021, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Connell Park Rehabilitation located at Connell Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 6A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to say, you know, it's nice to see some of these parks getting some money put towards them. I, I did have the, uh, pleasure of playing baseball here in high school and, and, uh, happy to support this.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 157, 2021, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Naog Park Swim Complex located at Naog Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I was happy, I was happy that, uh, President Gahan had the chance to, uh, talk to the mayor and Director Cipriani this morning to clear up the fact that, you know, this necessarily isn't a done deal in terms of the design and that council as well as the, uh, recreation authority will have some input into what the final, um, project will look like.
On the question, I, I, I agree with Councilman Donahue that, um, you know, I'm glad that, uh, our input will be considered, um, because I think we all have a lot of thoughts about this and, um, it's a lot of money that we'll be putting into the park either way, no matter what plan we choose. And, uh, we wanna make sure that it's going to be, um, the best, most, most successful plan. Um, so, um, happy to vote tonight for, uh, for this grant application. Um, and I look forward to, uh, continuing to discuss, um, the improvements to the park.
Very good. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 158, 2021, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the project to be known as the Weston Park Rehabilitation located at Weston Park, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a grant contract and commitment letter awarded for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the, uh, Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, all, all three projects here, um, I, I wish the city success in, with their grants and also had the opportunity to, to play sports at Weston Park, uh, during my high school teenage years and wish it success.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, old business, nothing at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Lori, thank you. Enjoy your retirement. Enjoy your free Tuesday nights now and, uh, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Lori.
I think you. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, Lori.
Thanks, Lori. I hope you know.